Welcome and thank you for joining us for today's virtual Town Hall meeting, exploring competencies for the emerging field of legal epidemiology. And you may have noticed I used the term Town Hall meeting versus webinar, and that's because this truly is meant to be a Town Hall meeting to hear from you. So we'll have panelists, we'll have presentations, but mostly we want to hear your feedback and your thoughts about what it is that's being discussed today. I'm Ron Bialik, President of the Public Health Foundation, and I'll be your moderator for today. Before we get going, Janelle, I'd like you to go through some housekeeping for us.
Sure, thank you. As you may have heard, being on the line, all attendees on the meeting today are automatically muted. If you are using, if you've joined using your phone, please choose the phone call option in your control panel. And if you've joined using your computer and mic, please use the computer audio option. Presentation materials are available for download in the handout section of your control panel. These materials include the slides and the draft legal epidemiology competencies model. So please feel free to download those to have those in front of you throughout today's meeting. And we want to hear from you, so please use the questions slash chat panel at any time throughout the webinar to submit any comments or questions that you have. And this webinar will be recorded and will be archived, and we'll be sure to make the archive available following the webinar.
Thank you so much, Janelle. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Public Health Foundation, we are a national nonprofit organization, and we focus on improving the public health through strengthening public health practice. And our focus areas are quality improvement, performance management, and workforce development. For today's Town Hall meeting, we want to thank the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and Change Lab Solutions for making this possible and for allowing us to host today's discussion. During today's Town Hall meeting, we will discuss what legal epidemiology is, why we do legal epidemiology, and also the draft competencies and the competency model laying out the desired knowledge, skills, and abilities needed for legal epidemiology. And then, most importantly, again, we want to hear your feedback. So before we get going into our panel discussions, we'd like to learn a little bit more about you, you know, who it is who's participating today. So we have a couple of polling questions for you. The first one is, what type of organization do you work for? And the poll will show up, or it is showing up, on your screen, so please select the one that is appropriate for you. And if it's more than one, for instance, if you're in academic health department and you're in both academia and the health department, please select both. So Janelle, the polling is open?
Polling is open. Please feel free to submit your responses.
Okay, Janelle, you think we're about there? Well, people still responding, so we'll hold off for another moment.
Maybe.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. So who is with us today, Janelle? Do we have the results?
Results are in.
So it looks like about half of you are with health departments, and then we have a good mix of individuals from academia and federal government, and then some of you also from nonprofit organizations as well as other. Thank you so much. Then we have a second poll, which is, what is your primary professional role? And in this one, while we do say "primary," if you have a couple of roles that you can't distinguish between which is primary, please respond to more than one. So Janelle, if you can open that poll up. We'll give you a few moments to respond to this one as well. So we're actually delighted by the mix of individuals from different types of settings who are participating today. See, people are still responding.
Yes.
Okay, Janelle, it looks like we're pretty much there. So as far as the roles for all of you who are on this webinar today, so we have, I guess, the number one is biostatisticians and epidemiologists and statisticians. That's not a surprise to us. Great that you can join us today. And then lawyers as well. And I suspect some of you fall into both of those categories, both the biostatistician, epidemiologist, statistician, and lawyer. We also have our administrators and directors on this call today, as well as faculty and educators. And then I notice there's a high proportion of "other." And maybe, you know, if you don't mind, if some of you can type in some of those other categories so that we can get a sense of who you are, what types of roles that you have. And then what we'll do is, I'll just take a moment here right now to see if we're getting anybody responding to that. Not yet. So what I would really appreciate you doing is, you know, over the next few minutes, as we're going through our discussions, if you can type in some of those roles, that will help us a little bit more knowing who it is on the call today. So thank you again, Janelle. So who's with us? Who's going to be speaking with us today? We have three wonderful panelists. We have Tara Ramanathan, and Tara is with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and she will talk with us today about what legal epidemiology is all about. And then we have Andy Baker White, and Andy is going to talk about the importance of legal epidemiology in practice. And Andy is with the Association of State and Territorial Health Officials. And then Montrice McNeil-Mrantum will talk with us about the legal epidemiology competencies model and the competencies themselves. And after all of that is laid out, again, we're going to engage in some discussion to hear from you. So now let me turn it over to Tara.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Tara Ramanathan. I hope everyone can hear me. For those of you who have joined and have not seen a CDC presentation before, I'll just say a couple of things. These are simply informational presentations, and we always have things to display so that we're attorneys, but we don't represent anyone. We're just talking about, in this case, legal research. My role at CDC has been pretty interesting. I have the privilege of working with professionals of all kinds. Montrice and I are sitting in the same office, and we were just looking at your poll about what kind of professional role you have. And, you know, we were saying, for many of you, you might even check more than one of those boxes. Here at the Public Health Law Program, we're all mostly attorneys. There are a couple folks who are health educators and come from other backgrounds. But what we do is we advance the use of law as a public health tool here at the agency and, of course, in the field. Our parent office is the Office for State Travel, Local, and Territorial Support, and its work is really to support health departments around the country in really doing the important day-to-day job of promoting public health and prevention. And as we come to sort of understand more about the role of law within public health, we really are here to support those agencies as well. So how do we do this? Montrice Rantum, who is here from third in this presentation, is our Lead for Training and Workforce Development here in the Public Health Law Program. This competency model and all of the work surrounding it, they're really in her wheelhouse more than anybody else's, and she has been doing this for a really long time. And we train thousands of people every single year. So if you have any public health law training needs, please do reach out to us. We also have a Lead for Outreach and Strategic Planning. She does, her name's Abigail Farrell. If you all are subscribed to the Public Health Law News, that is edited primarily by her, and she is kind of the person who leads all of our work with other organizations around the country. And then, of course, we also work on legal epidemiology. I work with a team of really talented and brilliant legal researchers, all of whom are lawyers but also have skills in public health research and public health methods. So we actually, I will talk more about our work today, but we are trying to serve communities around the country and, of course, CDC programs in making this work translatable. So what are we doing here exactly? I show this map. If any of you have seen this before, I find this series of maps that RWJF put out really fascinating. This is a map of the Washington DC metro area, and the colored lines are actually the subway system in DC, the metro system. And I believe the dots along the lines are stops along the subway, and the numbers associated with those stops are actually life expectancy for folks, I think, who live around the subway stops. And it's fascinating. So these maps show wide disparities in life expectancy within small metro and sometimes not metro areas. And it's kind of impressively appalling in some ways to us as public health practitioners because this shouldn't be the case. You know, this is here, 77 to 84 years is perhaps not the largest life expectancy you think of. There are maps where you see, you know, a dozen years of difference within a small geographic area. And as, you know, people who are observing the world around us, we look at this list of what we call social determinants of health, and we think about all of these factors as maybe playing a role. We start to think about as public health people, you know, how can we improve, what interventions can we use to kind of improve this sort of disparity that we see? And in addition, as lawyers, we also see jurisdictions. So this is really what we're beginning to talk about more and more at CDC and in the field, is the role of law in maybe potentially playing a role in both creating these social determinants of health as well as playing a role in health outcomes themselves. So if we're going to study the impact of law and policy on social determinants of health or other things, perhaps we actually need to know how to do that. And so we have started to think of law as really an interesting natural experiment and one capable of study in a rigorous and almost scientific way, just in the same way that you might study other factors. We think of legal provisions and certainly laws, policies, cases, even case law, as providing some sort of downstream effect that could be something related to social determinants or health outcomes themselves. And these little sort of diagrams on the right side of this slide sort of show one example of how that relationship might work. But we think of law as really providing an opportunity to study how public health interventions really play out. We see that if there are laws in two different states that create two different sets of social determinants or health outcomes, we think of these as observational studies that we can do. They don't require manipulation, and we have a lot of information because we can read what the law says. It's public knowledge for the most part. And so we would think, you know, we'd be able to compare and contrast how law can play a role pretty easily. We may not be able to, you know, determine causality. We may not really be able to say that this is, you know, possible to do in a randomized way. And there may be a million confounding factors, as you can think of. But at the same time, it poses many opportunities. So with that, we have started to become part of a larger field that has really been, you know, coming out of various academic and practice-based centers around the country over the last few years. And this field is called legal epidemiology. And it plays a role in terms of lawyers and legal practice. It certainly plays a role in our day-to-day sort of way that we do our work. While we think of practice as really applying the law to a set of facts, if you go to your general counsel's office, you might get legal advice. You might be able to be represented in a court if there's a, you know, car accident or something like that. Everyone has heard of or been through these experiences with lawyers involved. But there are things that we do in public health law practice. In this diagram, which comes from an article that came out last year related to how to conceptualize public health law through a transdisciplinary lens, we really see the relationship of public health law practice and legal epidemiology is a close-knit one. We think of research as supporting public health law practice, and that is, of course, legal research, not necessarily the IRB process that we think of for other kinds of research. But on the right side of the diagram, we see similar kinds of activities that occur when we think of legal epidemiology. We're able to study laws as practices and potentially the text of laws themselves as potential causes of disease and injury, so legal etiology. We study laws and intervention itself, so legal prevention and control. How can we change and deploy laws and policies to actually prevent disease and injury? And we think of surveilling law and policy, so policy surveillance, to track what is going on in various jurisdictions that can improve and impact public health. So what is exactly legal epidemiology? This is the definition that we have been using for several years. And for those who have really heard about legal Epi or even seen parts of this presentation before, I hope you'll think about this and tell us a little bit more about how it is useful to you in your sessions and sort of what, how it plays a role in your day-to-day work. So to us, legal epidemiology here at CDC is really cused closely to this definition. It's the scientific study of law as a factor in the cause distribution and prevention of disease and injury in a population. And the word that I always pick out here is "scientific," law as science, law as something that can also create data if it's analyzed in a rigorous way. And that's really compelling and interesting. And being at CDC for the last, now, eight or nine years, I've had the opportunity to see how Epi's and social scientists here at CDC really pick up on this and start to think about how they can use law in the studies that they're doing in order to kind of understand better the context of social determinants of health and why things are happening around us. So at CDC, we typically do two kinds of studies that we've kind of lumped under this larger definition. Legal mapping studies, which are really comparative law studies, and legal evaluation studies, which are not exactly legal epidemiology, but at the same time, evaluation provides information about, you know, the impact of law and policy and how things play out. I do want to mention that the third bullet here, research innovation, really is trying to capture that there are many things, this is such a developing field, that there are many things going on around the country that are not falling into necessarily mapping or evaluation studies but are improving on and expanding the definition of legal epidemiology. I've heard of randomized control trials that obviously the federal government cannot be involved in, but other organizations are able to conduct to try to see if we're able to deploy legal or policy innovations to impact various outcomes in a more sort of rigorous way. So, you know, something to keep in mind as we continue to sort of promote this very new and expanding field. So, legal Epi at CDC, so this is pretty an interesting concept, but I would think that if you look at the pyramid on the left, which came from Dr. Frieden's Framework for Public Health Action, this really describes factors that are important to how we do public health work. And the two bottom sort of layers on this pyramid really speak to public health law. It changes the context to make individuals' default decisions healthy. And then there are some examples of legal initiatives on the right there. And then there's, of course, the socioeconomic factors we've discussed. So law as a potential driver of poverty or educational level or housing inequality itself. So at CDC, people really ask us in the Public Health Law Program, number one, what does the law say? And number two, how does the law work? And the goals of our work are really to make the law, therefore, understandable to people, a variety of different audiences, a variety of professionals with different backgrounds, and to sort of allow them to compare legal data to other kinds of data by, you know, doing studies to identify associations between law and health. And so out of this work, oh, there's the arrow for changing the context. So out of this work really comes the two main types of research that we do at the Public Health Law Program. The first being legal mapping studies, which are, as I said, comparative law analyses across topics of public health importance and jurisdictions and time even. I will say that it's really compelling to show people a map, which on the top right, you know, we've characterized different legal provisions, in this case, related to radiological health, you know, using a map to display the results of a study. But if you can show people a bar graph, you know, it's very, it's a different way to represent that information. And it really is one of the ways that we are able to quantify law and policy and speak to sort of research needs in a different way than potentially lawyers have in the past. So the other thing I'll point out is that this type of work, this bar graph and the map that accompanies it, it's a cross-sectional study, really. It's what we call a legal assessment. If we actually look at policy surveillance, which is actually tracking these provisions over time, we're able to show a lot more. So this is a map here of Ebola screening and monitoring policies for asymptomatic individuals that we, folks in our program, put together at the very beginning of the Ebola outbreak to describe the policy environment around the country for how we deal with folks that came back from the response from West Africa and whether, you know, they were quarantined or potentially isolated by the time they came back to prevent the spread of Ebola here in the United States. So what happened is, over time, and you have to forgive me for the formatting here, this map started to change as policies changed. And over several iterations, if you'll follow sort of the changing colors here, we started to see jurisdictions understand that their policies, in some ways, were different then or maybe stricter than CDC guidance, and they started altering the language of their policies. And we ended up with this map here on August 31st in 2015. And this is sort of the final map that has been published in an article, I think, in NWR here out of CDC. So legal epidemiology, as you can see, really allows us to identify trends across jurisdictions. We're enabling, I think, the study of the impact and effectiveness of laws on health if we're able to also show the relationship between these provisions and legal data. So I also want to mention that while mapping studies provide a lot of interesting information and we're able to create pretty pictures, including this on the right, which is really a polar graph that compares exemptions for state school vaccination laws, so things that people, provisions that people use to not vaccinate their children, so something like a medical or religious exemption and other kinds of exemptions. We're able to provide these kind of comparative analyses. But when you have this detail of information, you're also potentially able to compare those legal data to other kinds of data, so health cost system data. We do quantitative and qualitative studies. And if you look at this graph, you're able to find your jurisdiction somewhere along the outer edge of this graph, and you're able to say, all right, there are three colors lit up for me that represent three different kinds of legal provisions. If I look at the state next door, maybe they have fewer or more boxes lit up. And if those trends match trends in, you know, some sort of vaccine-preventable disease rate, maybe the law has something to do with it. And so how do legal epidemiologists really work in public health practice? And this is going to be the, where the rubber meets the road for you all, I think. Legal Epi studies answer specific research questions. As we talked about, legal assessments and policy surveillance under the rubric of legal mapping studies really answer sort of what do laws say across jurisdictions on the topic and how do they change over time. Legal evaluation studies instead sort of compare trends in law to trends in health. And I ask the question of sort of what impact can law have on health costs and the health system overall? So when we look at sort of a logic model of how law works, we start to pick out things that we can actually potentially study, the text of legal provisions, of course, and health outcomes, that's on the impact side, but things in the middle as well. So potentially organizational capacity, the way that budgets impact how law is actually implemented, behavior changes on the outcome side, potentially that law, you know, incentivizes to change the context of how we make decisions. And then, of course, intermediaries like enforcement, whether our laws are actually enforced, if you are actually going to be ticketed for texting and driving. So we also see variations that we can measure across different kinds of legal provisions and across states. So here's an example of how agency oversight relates to, in this case, I actually looked at variations related to healthcare quality. So some laws require registration of certain entities, of healthcare facilities or providers. You can have registration and inspections. You can have registrations, inspections, and investigations. And if you think of laws that's falling across states or across localities that's falling within one of those different kinds of legal regimes, potentially you'll be able to gather data to understand how actual outcomes are working and how the law works. And potentially show public health impact. So these are examples of correlations that we've been able to make between law and certain identified health objectives. And we can start to also see that legal data allows us to identify best practices, potentially gaps and the solutions that fill them. So this is a toolkit that Andy is about to discuss now in his presentation. And I wanted to present it as an example of sort of the extra sort of benefits of doing legal evaluation work because when we did a qualitative study that Andy will describe, we actually were able to create this toolkit that came out of it, which really provides much more information than simply the results of a study. It gives information for healthcare practitioners that are entering into MOUs or other kinds of agreements with public health entities to share information and so on. So there are a variety of kind of tools that can come out of legal epidemiology activities. And I present all of this to you so that, first of all, the language becomes a little bit more familiar for folks on the phone who haven't worked in this field as yet, but also so that you can start to see similarities between this work and sort of what you have been doing already in this field and start to see things that you might use legal epidemiology for. So with that, I will turn it over to Andy Baker White from ASTO to describe a little bit more about legal Epi in the field. And if you have any other questions about this presentation or anything else, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, Tara. And before, Andy, before you dive in here, just a couple of things I'd like to mention. One is, thank you all for providing us with some additional information about professional roles of individuals who are participating today. We have public health nurses, physicians, environmental health specialists. We have a grant writer, health communications specialist, NIH program manager. We also have some medical librarians, and actually, one mentioned that they were a former attorney, and some students. So thank you all again for participating. We also, before we dive into Andy's discussion, we have another poll for you that we'd like you to respond to. And on this one, we'd like to hear what types of legal epidemiology activities do you engage in? So, Janelle, if you could put the poll up, we'll just leave that up for a few moments. So our choices are around activities around research, using the research to develop laws and interventions, implementing the laws, conducting surveillance, and other. We've heard from about half of you. Thank you. And going to continue, leave the poll open for just a moment longer. I feel like election night.
Watching the results roll in?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we still have people reporting, so I'm going to hold off yet. Okay, why don't we report the results? Okay, well, we have really an interesting, very even distribution here. Wow. So basically evenly divided amongst the various ways that people are engaging in legal epidemiology as well as "other." And like we did with professional roles, if you all can write in some of those "other," that will be quite helpful to us. We very much would appreciate that. So at this point, let's hear from Andy to provide us a bit more information about practical applications of legal epidemiology. Andy?
All right, thanks, Ron. So let's see, I can advance. All right, the slide's going. Are the slides advancing for you, Ron?
They were, yeah. Yeah, you're on, like, it's like the third or so slide. So what we'll do is, would you like for us to advance them? Or I'm going to have Janelle go back. Is this, why, Janelle?
I'll take you back to the beginning.
Yeah, we'll take you back to the beginning, okay?
Okay. Yeah, because what I see now, I still see the quick poll results up on my screen.
Okay. You may be, are you on a Wi-Fi connection, maybe?
Yes, I am.
That's possibly it, that it's working slower.
All right. So I can say, yeah, I can say next.
Okay, all right. We'll take care of it on this end. All right. All right, thanks. All right. Thanks.
So thanks, Tara. Thanks, Ron. So why legal epidemiology? If you just go to the next slide. So as Tara was saying, you know, legal epidemiology, it's this emerging field that's blending the practice of developing and implementing health laws with scientific evaluation of how laws can affect health. So it's being defined as a scientific study of laws, a factor in the cause, distribution, and prevention of disease and injury. So what does this mean for state, tribal, local, and territorial public health practice? Well, what's on the screen now are just a few of the examples of how legal epidemiology can be used for those different practices of public health. Legal epidemiology can be beneficial to studies that examine how laws regulate and safeguard the environment. I mean, if you think about the wide variety of environmental health law topics out there, I mean, such as laws limiting exposure to disease-causing substances, laws that regulate the use of disposal of harmful chemicals and materials, laws that create parks and community spaces, and other laws that establish new frameworks like health and all policies. Using legal epidemiology to examine those laws, you know, can show the health impact that those laws have. For local practitioners, using legal epidemiology can be beneficial due to the lack of cross jurisdictions, or the difficulty to find examples or best practices across local jurisdictions. So local public health practitioners can use legal epidemiology tools to see the impact of their local ordinances on the health of their communities. Public health professionals can also use legal epidemiology to conduct surveillance of their own laws and to see how those laws and policies, again, are being used to impact the health, and then take those results to inform the evaluation of those laws. Maybe they need to be changed, maybe they need to be amended, or use the evaluation of those laws to come up with future program planning. And finally, laws can, or legal epidemiology can also be used, you know, in real-world examples that we have as far as public health response. So if you go to the next slide, we'll actually look at an example of the public health, of using legal epidemiology for a public health response. So many of you can think back to 2012, to the fungal meningitis outbreak that hit 20 states and resulted in over 750 infections and led to 64 deaths. So due to some contaminated steroids that patients were receiving at hospitals and pain clinics. During this response, public health departments, really, they needed to quickly identify patients in the hospitals that had the clinical signs of fungal meningitis. They needed to figure out, you know, the causes of the disease itself, and they needed to find it, as many people as they could who'd been exposed to a contaminated steroid. Next slide, please. So that meant accessing patient health records. One of the problems that health departments ran into during the response to the outbreak was getting timely and useful access to the electronic health records. And so at the time, it looked like that there were a variety of legal provisions that both facilitated and hindered health departments' access to the patient health data at a variety of the facilities, healthcare facilities. So as a result of this, what CDC and ASTO did was they conducted an evaluation of how well state laws and the implementation of those state laws allowed the healthcare facilities to provide access to patient data to the health departments through the EHRs. Next slide, please. And what this evaluation found was that there were a lot of perceived legal barriers to accessing electronic health records. And it turned out that what a lot of the healthcare facilities thought were actually legal prohibitions weren't in fact true barriers to sharing that information with health departments. So through the interviews that CDC and ASTO conducted with the health departments, we were able to identify solutions to these perceived barriers. And so some of those solutions may have been technological solutions such as dedicating, coming up with dedicated health department user IDs to the electronic health records. And some of the solutions were legal solutions, such as maybe amending a state law or developing a memorandum of understanding between the health department and the healthcare facility. Next slide, please. So we took that information and all those findings, and we rolled those up into a toolkit that's now available online so that others in the future, when they run into these problems, it can help them access electronic health records during an outbreak. Some of the things that this toolkit does is, you know, provides a look at ways that public health professionals have built and maintained relationships to facilitate their access to and use of electronic health records during outbreaks. It also provides examples of how public health professionals have addressed security and privacy concerns during healthcare acquired or healthcare-associated infection outbreaks. It also provides public health professionals with best practices and examples of the barriers that we found that were related to accessing and using EHRs. So this is, again, is just one example of how we are able to use legal epidemiology, how are the laws impacting the health outcomes of the community, of the population. So next slide, please. So being here at ASTO with our 59 members from the states, District Columbia, Territories, and the freely associated states, another way that we use legal epidemiology is, like a lot of the examples that Tara had earlier, the mapping, the charts. We get questions all the time, well, my state's thinking of doing this, what are other states doing? So the chart there on the right, initial opioid prescription limits, we're able to look at, here's what the states did in 2016, they've actually implemented the laws or regulations. And then the gray-colored states are the ones that, you know, actually have bills pending in 2017. So is really able to give a snapshot of the trend to our state health officials. And then, of course, the map on the right, the ever-changing marijuana map of here, which, you know, we're always getting questions about, you know, what's the status of the medical marijuana in the U.S. and the recreational marijuana. So these are just a couple of examples of how we're using some of the legal epidemiology methods here at ASTO. I would imagine, you know, instead of, whereas we do a lot more of the comparative work, that any legal epidemiologist in a state health department, you know, would be able to do the more long-term comparative work, impact work for their specific state laws. So now, we saw, so I've been trying to give you is just kind of an overview of how legal epidemiology can be used by our health departments. Let's go to the next slide. So here in a few minutes, in a couple of minutes, Montreux is going to be talking about a competency model for legal epidemiology. So as the field of legal epidemiology grows, I think, you know, we're going to have to ensure that those that use it are competent in the use, whether or not they identify themselves as legal epidemiologists. So I'm not a competency development expert, but I did have the pleasure of serving on the expert review work group that was convened to work on the competency model. And so some of the things after, you know, being on that work group, after seeing the results, here are just a few ways that I've been able to kind of see on how the competency model itself can be used to improve legal epidemiology by any of the state, or any of the health departments. So I think the model itself can be used to identify gaps in the skills and so forth. It can be used to incorporate elements of legal epidemiology into future work and future research. The model itself can be used to help health departments recruit and select and evaluate performance of those who are conducting or using legal epidemiology tools. And I think also, number four, legal Epi, or the competency model can be really used to help develop career ladders and employee development and training plans. So that's all I have right now. I think, you know, again, if you have any questions about how we've been using legal epidemiology here at ASTO, or any questions about the toolkit, feel free to contact me. And I think right now, I turn it back over to Ron for another poll question.
Great. Thank you so much, Andy. And now that we've heard from both Tara and Andy about legal epidemiology and how legal epidemiology is practiced, we'd like to hear from all of you about other examples that you have of how legal epidemiology is practiced in your organizations. For this one, we don't have a specific poll. For this one, we really want to hear from you either through the question slash chat box, or if you raise your hand, Janelle can unmute you. So what we're looking for at this point is to hear your thoughts or your examples on how legal epidemiology is practiced in your organization. Do we have anybody who's chimed in yet with the chat or any raised hands? Just pause for a moment. Andy and Tara, you must have given all of the great examples. So wait another moment or two. So how, so if you work with legal epidemiologists, you're working with legal epidemiology in our field, how are you seeing it practiced? Are there other examples that you've seen within your governmental organization or some other organization? Looks like there's a raised hand.
Yeah. David, it looks like your hand is raised. I'm going to send you the, a special number that you'll enter, and then I can unmute you after you've done it. So you should see a number, and it's a star, then that number, and you should be able to, I'll be able to mute you. And just in terms of the comments that we've received so far in the chat box, we've had several people say that they're not really using legal epidemiology yet in their organization, but that they see a lot of potential future uses for it. So thank you, Tara and Andy. And I know Montreux will add to this in a moment. Thanks, David. I'm going to unmute you now.
This is David Presley. Hi, this is David Presley. I actually work in the public health law program here at CDC. I just wanted to chime in with some examples. I'm newer to the organization, I've been here about six or seven months now, but I come from academia. And we used it quite similarly to how the public health law program at CDC does, where in the particular research department that I worked at, at the university that I was in, professors would come to us with a particular question about trying to understand or maybe apply for a grant, write a paper, conduct some sort of study about the impact of a law on public health or a policy on public health. And we, as attorneys in this particular soft money research shop, would consult with them, kind of lead them down the path of policy analysis to show them how mechanistically the law would actually work, and then show them what was actually possible within the realm of legal research, and help them identify and understand sort of where all the dragons were, so to speak, where all the confounders were within their particular study, and help them wrap their minds around how big of a research task this particular kind of study would be. So not dissimilar from how the public health law program at CDC operates, in as much as the different CIOs come to the public health law program with a problem or a question, and we can consult with them and act as these like policy attorneys that show them the path, show them the way, to help them understand how this particular thing operates. So it's a little bit more of a broad view of how it operates, but in terms of sort of an additional group of people who operationalize this legal epidemiology practice, it's a model that definitely works and is implemented in other organizations and places.
Great. Thank you very much, David. And Kathleen has, there's a few other people who've typed in comments. So Kathleen, if you can read some of those off?
Yeah, so we had one person share in terms of uses drug diversion investigation, which are always plagued by questions about sharing information, compelling people to be tested, that sort of thing. And then there were, then there are a couple of comments about, again, similar to earlier, not yet using legal Epi, but this is really fantastic, I'm learning a lot about this field being here today, and someone who simply wrote in that this is a fantastic presentation so far, great job. So that's always nice to hear. Please continue to keep the comments coming. And I think Randy Elder has his hand raised, so we'll unmute you in just a second here. Joe's taking care of that right now. You're unmuted, Randy.
All right. Great. Well, I second the comment about the quality of the presentation so far. And just wanted to chime in on the types of legal Epi I've been mainly involved in, which is looking at the effects of laws. And there are really two different types of studies that I've been involved in. One, I think, is within the competency level of a general epidemiologist, which is looking at just the kind of zero-one effect of whether a law is in place or not and what the effects are. But I think the more complex and perhaps more ultimately useful type of legal Epi involves really kind of getting under the hood of laws and looking at the, you know, the specific provisions in them, and trying to tease out what are the active ingredients of the law, so to speak, whether they're actively, you know, protecting health or harming health. And I think to really get in those types of studies where you're trying to look for the active ingredient in a law, I think that's where it's imperative that, you know, epidemiologists work closely with lawyers who have the expertise to do the classification decisions that can be very complicated for a non-expert.
Great. Thank you, Randy, for the examples. We're going to move on at this point, I think. Or do we have any others, Kathleen or Janelle?
Yeah, we have a couple more comments in the chat box. So someone's saying they've used legal epidemiology methods to evaluate how Medicaid prior authorization policies are impacting prescribing behaviors of physicians. That's kind of cool. And then, sorry, I'm scrolling here. Someone mentioned that they know someone in Kansas City who's doing significant research on how law and policy impact funding, and what the most effective partnerships and funding opportunities might be from a policy perspective. So that's a really neat connection as well. And someone mentioned, in Chicago, a new ordinance was implemented a few years ago prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products within 500 feet of elementary, middle, or secondary schools. But the health department does not, at the current time, monitor the effects of this new law. So again, bringing in how these things can have impact in the community.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, for providing examples. Keep those examples coming in. Again, we are recording all of this so that we can share this with others as well. At this point, we have another poll. We just want to hear a little bit more from all of you about legal epidemiology, and in particular, how legal epidemiologists work with your organization. We've already heard from some of you that legal, you don't have legal epidemiologists in your organization, but we'd like to hear from all of you about how you may work with legal epidemiologists. So Janelle, if you could put the poll up there. And so our responses are things like, yes, you work with them because you are one. Everything from there to, no, we don't have any. So for our colleagues at CDC, Change Lab Solutions So for our colleagues at CDC, Change Lab Solutions, and ASTO, it looks like this emerging field is indeed seen as needed, but one that maybe doesn't yet have the people needed in these slots. So maybe we can stop the poll at this point and show the results to everybody. So you'll see that the vast majority of you responding today said, no, you... your organizations do not employ legal epidemiologists, but a fair number are legal epidemiologists who are on the call or working with legal epidemiologists. So thank you again for participating in this poll. So at this point, what we want to do is move from having... describe what legal epidemiology is, providing some practical examples, and now we've heard, you know, it seems like there is this desire and need, and it's an emerging field. And we're going to hear from Montreux now, who's going to talk about the knowledge, skills, and abilities of legal epidemiologists, and the legal epidemiology competency model that's meant to help guide the development of legal epidemiologists. Montreux, let me turn that over to you.
Thank you so much, Ron, and thank you to Andy and Tara for setting up my portion of the presentation. So now, let's talk about this competency model. First, I've got to offer a disclaimer. Really, just note that I'm a lawyer, but I'm not your lawyer, nor am I CDC's lawyer. So if you need any legal advice or counsel on anything that has been presented today, please seek the advice of an attorney licensed in your jurisdiction. It's also important for me to note that the version of the legal epi competency model that we will share today, and that has been shared with you through the registration process for this town hall, is a draft version for stakeholder feedback only. It's meant for very limited distribution until the final version, which will include any revisions that are based on this validation process, until that's ready for dissemination. And we are hoping that we will disseminate the final model sometime this fall. So as Tara mentioned, there are three teams within CDC's Public Health Law Program. The Training and Workforce Development Team is one. I serve as the team lead, and we work in five core areas. We run a webinar program. We do an average of 25 webinars annually with partners, including American Health Lawyers Association, American Public Health Association, the Network for Public Health Law, and others. We offer in-person trainings and presentations, including road shows, where our staff attorneys will go and deliver trainings and presentations, competency-based trainings, on a wide variety of topics to primarily the state, tribal, local, and territorial health departments and their partners. We run an internship/ externship program, where we bring on not only law students, but we also bring on students who are master's in public health students, and students who may be studying in other graduate-level programs but have an interest or demonstrated expertise in public health or public health law. We also have our competency modeling program, which is the heart of what we're talking about here today. And then also, we are working with Change Lab Solutions toward the development of a public health law academy, which we plan to launch at APHA's annual meeting November of this year. So those are our five core areas of work, and all toward a vision of a transdisciplinary public health workforce competent in the use and understanding of the role of law as a public health tool. So what business does CDC's Public Health Law Program have in building competency models? That's a question that I asked myself when we were first sort of positioned down this path. Just to offer a quick definition of a competency model, the definition we work from. We define a competency model as simply a list of statements organized into domains that are attributable to satisfactory or exceptional employee performance in that area. So the catalyst for our work in competency modeling started in 2013, when we were asked by CDC's Office for Public Health Preparedness in response to develop a competency model based on public health emergency law standards and competencies. They recognized that there was a gap in a lot of the checklist and materials they were creating focused on law, and asked that we develop something that was user-friendly, that could provide some foundation for training focused on law as it relates to preparing for and responding to public health emergencies. So we did that work in 2013, and after going through that exercise and getting a lot of positive feedback, and we began to recognize that there's a value in competency models focused on law in public health. And so we started to sort of vet with our partners and ask them whether or not we needed something that was more generally focused on public health law, that was user-friendly, relatively easy to use. And I, as a trainer and a facilitator, had a very selfish reason. I wanted to make sure everything we were doing was competency-based, and we needed some support from the field in building the foundation for that. So we conducted a needs assessment around 2013, learned from the field that they wanted competency-based training, and they wanted some sort of foundation for building competencies in public health law. And that really launched our competency modeling program in the Public Health Law Program. In 2016, we followed the Public Health Emergency Law Competency Model with the General Public Health Law Competency Model. This year, with your help and feedback, we plan to release the Legal Epidemiology Competency Model. And next year, we are going to start work on a model that is focused on the competencies, the knowledge, and skills needed for public health attorneys that are working with state, tribal, local, and territorial health departments. So to develop our competency models, we follow best practices in competency model development. What you see on the screen there are five steps that are generally recognized as the steps that need to be taken to develop a solid competency model. We tailor them to our needs in public health and public health law, but this really is the framework that we use. The idea here is that we want to build on and align with existing frameworks and models for competencies in the field of public health. We don't want to add additional bulk to folks' workload, but we want to create a tool that's helpful for this particular niche. So what we do in our first step in the competency model development process is to conduct a literature review. We look at competencies across the board in public health, performance standards, and benchmarks from a variety of public health professions. We look at medical competencies, public health, social, and social science-related competency statements, and related articles in the literature. We then compile those results without doing much analysis, just sort of identifying what's out there into a competency library. For the development of the legal epi competency model, we identified more than 20 competency models or performance standards to include in the competency library. During the second phase, we convened a multidisciplinary expert review work group. You guys should have handouts of the legal epi competency model validation sheet, which lists the members of our expert review work group for this particular competency model. You'll see the names there on the screen. Hopefully, you'll recognize some of those names. Our idea was that we wanted to make sure we had a group of subject matter experts. The group was composed of people representing different types of public health practice that represent different experience levels, some lawyers, academics, public health practitioners, healthcare practitioners, and experts in competencies and competency model development. The members of the expert review work group meet monthly during the development process for this model, and for about four months. And through this step or through this stage, they really helped guide the competency model development process. First thing we asked them to do was to review each model in the library, and then highlight or prioritize the relative importance of each of the competency statements in the library. And then we deleted those that were seen... that seemed unrelated to law-based knowledge, skills, and abilities related to legal epi. During the third phase, we worked with our expert review work group to create a working model. We actually went through the creation of about three or four working models until we got to a draft that we felt comfortable with sharing for validation purposes. Our role in the Public Health Law Program, staff assigned to this, was to analyze the data that was given to us by the expert review work group, and to try to... one of my favorite words, put them in buckets, or to compile that information into the domains that you'll see that emerge through this process. Once we got a working model, we started thinking through validation, talking with our partners at Change Lab, and developed this relationship with the Public Health Foundation, and we're very happy to have them as a part of this team as we go down these efforts and our last step in the competency model development process, which is validation. Of course, the purpose of validation, the purpose of you guys being on the line today, is to verify that this competency model makes sense, that the content is accurate and relevant. We recognize that this is version one. We want your feedback on this version. We'll make adjustments and release a model for you. Then we anticipate going through this process again in a few years, so that we can make changes based upon the evolution of the field of legal epi. So I touched on this a little bit, but I really wanted to drive home our reasoning behind developing this legal epi competency model. Our purpose was to provide a common language for those of us who are working in this field to describe the critical skills and knowledge needed to engage in this work. We recognize that there are lawyers, policy practitioners, public health practitioners who want to do this work and need to identify the gaps in their skill set, and we hope that this model can help do that, that they can identify what they need to learn to better contribute to this field. We also hope that the development of this model and the conversations around legal epidemiology really help to drive, to further drive, the development of legal epi-focused curricula, whether it's in law schools, schools of public health, trainings at agencies and health departments. We also want to see more scholarly support in the literature for public health, for legal epi generally. We want to see more legal epi reports and findings being published in our traditional public health literature, and we're hopeful that by getting all of us sort of speaking that same language, we will begin to see more of that. We also, in our program, felt a need for some tools to help guide us in the development of products that will help further... just further push public health law-related research and training under our federal capacity building cooperative agreement, but also to help support folks who have law-based work that needs to be done under other cooperative agreements, or to provide a way to address that and have the sort of language in requests for funding, or in funding opportunities. So those are sort of our overarching purposes. And the goal at the end of all of this is to have guidelines for minimum competencies in legal epi that are easy to use, that really are user-friendly, and set up a minimum of law-specific skills and legal knowledge in order to do this work with legal epi. So we have heard that our public health law-related competency models have been used to develop competency-based curriculum. In fact, all of the trainings that we do in the Public Health Law Program are competency-based, and we know that our partners at the Northwest Center have used our competency model. So we're hopeful that the legal epi competency model will be used for... as a foundation for national standards of knowledge, skills, and ability from legal epi, whether it's for updating, creating, or revising job descriptions, whether it's for career planning or self-assessment by employees who do this work. They may not even recognize that they're doing legal epi, but hopefully, this language will help them as they're doing career padding. Again, career guidance and exploration for students. I know we've got a lot of academics on the phone, and lately, with our sort of road show we've been doing on legal epi, we've been hearing a lot more from academics who recognize this is something that they can offer to their students to give them a little more value added as they go out into the career field. Again, my selfish needs, competency-based training, and learning outcome objectives, and curriculum development, that really is how I plan to use this model once it's been validated. I just want to touch on a couple of key assumptions. These are listed in the draft validation documents, so I won't spend too much time on them. I think the most important that's on this screen is to note that the competency model is organized into three domains, which I will share in just a second. Each domain has four competency statements, and they are accompanied by language that's associated with three tiers of professional development, the same three tiers that were used by the Council on Linkages in the development of the core competencies. So you'll see tier one, tier two, and tier three, and some of this language has been shaped to meet our needs as far as legal epi is concerned. So tier one would be our entry-level researchers, folks that we would call coders in the Public Health Law Program, those who actually do the legal epi research tasks and are not in management or supervisory positions. Tier two would be a mid-tier practitioner who may be in some sort of program management role, a team lead role, or supervisory role. And tier three would be a senior management position, or maybe even a PI if this is a funded research opportunity. One of the things that was important to me that we have as assumptions moving forward with this process is that as we develop a model that's specific to the knowledge, skills, and abilities needed for legal epi, there needed to be an assumption that there is already a basic competency in general public health law in understanding the process for the creation and implementation of law and policy, you know, language and understanding of basic principles in admin and constitutional law. And we've got trainings that are available to help with that. But that was a part of our thinking going into this, that folks that would be interested in this model would already have that basic set of knowledge. And it's also important to note that this does not intend to be the end-all, be-all. It does not... we don't want this to limit the practice of legal epi. Legal epi, we have a definition for it that may be... it may be expanded as we move through the evolution of the field. And so we know that not all of the necessary skills for every job in legal epi would be represented in this model. We want it to grow and change. And we also know that every person that's working in the field, whether they call themselves a legal epidemiologist or not, and we know that they don't necessarily need all of the competencies listed, but we wanted to provide a broad set of skills that folks can use and tailor for their needs in the field. All right, so let's take a look at the model. I will read the statement, the large or the overarching competency statement. I know that a link to the draft model was included in the promotional materials, as well as on the registration webpage for the town hall. So, and we've also uploaded it here to the webinar system, so it'd be good if you have it in front of you, so that you can review the behavioral statements associated with each tier as I go through the large competency statement. And I would ask that you just sort of be thinking about whether or not these competency statements accurately capture the basic core knowledge, skills, and abilities needed to effectively do this practice. And as Ron will know, you will have some time post this webinar to offer those comments and feedback as well. All right, so statement number one, under domain one, general legal competencies. A competent legal epidemiology professional will be able to articulate and apply legal epi principles and concepts to inform health, fiscal, administrative, legal, social, and political research and discourse. And you'll see there the behavioral statements listed for each tier. Remember, tier one is that the beginning, researchers and coders. Tier two is mid-level management, and tier three would be senior management or supervisory. And I'll just give you a few seconds there. All right, still in domain one, general legal epi competencies. Competency statement two reads, a legal epi practitioner who is competent will be able to incorporate methodologies and iterative processes into well-designed legal epidemiology research. And again, take a look at the three tiers. It may be worth pointing out here that as we develop this process, we sort of ask the members of the expert review work group to identify where they would fall in these tiers, and then help us identify the knowledge, skills, and abilities related to that. So that may be another framework that may be helpful to you, for you to identify where you'd fall, tier one, tier two, or tier three, and then helping us think through this language. Moving on, for the sake of time. Competency statement number three, under domain one, reads, a competent legal epi practitioner will be able to develop and disseminate materials and recommendations based on legal epi research findings for public health, legal, and other audiences. And tier four reads, a competent... And tier four reads, "A competent legal Epi professional will be able to monitor and evaluate the use of legal Epi findings to inform health, fiscal, administrative, legal, social, and political activities." Again, it is worth noting that as we identified the tiers for this one in particular, I remember conversations surrounding how different each tier, the different tasks that would be associated for each tier for this particular one, you know, we would expect someone in tier three who serves as a principal investigator or a supervisor to really be looking for opportunities to put tier one and tier two to work in this area, if that makes sense. So then we have domain two. And domain two is focused on competencies for legal mapping studies, which Tara defined for you a little earlier. Again, we have four competency statements, and we've got the accompanying behavioral statements. Competency statement number one focuses on identifying needs for evidence-based legal research for a specific public health topic to inform the process, nature, and impact of existing and potential policies on law and public health. This one's really focused on identifying legal Epi-related needs in the field, and it looks different across tiers. Competency statement number two focuses on designing studies. So it focuses on designing policy surveillance or legal assessment studies to address specific research questions. This one was particularly important to me because we offer training on designing studies, and we wanted to make sure that there was, again, some foundational competencies that supported that training. I also think that this is one that's particularly relevant if you're looking to hire someone who can develop a legal Epi study. Again, under domain two, legal mapping studies. Statement three reads, "Track and assess laws, policies, and political and programmatic priorities using evidence-based or empirical guidelines." At least it includes health-related principles or trends, stakeholders of special interests, or other key developments or concerns. And this is really this idea of tracking and then offering some analysis of the tracking of the laws. Statement number four, analyze, validate, and analyze, validate, and synthesize results and findings that compare and contrast meaningful variations in law and policy related to health. So we take this data that we've collected in the legal mapping study, and we offer some sort of analysis. We validate it, make sure that the study is replicable, and we share those findings in a way that's meaningful. The third domain, and I want to try to wrap this up quickly, again, you have this information in front of you. I want to give the mic back to Ron. But domain number three, there are again four competency statements. And this domain focuses on legal evaluation studies. Statement one notes that a legal Epi professional who is competent will be able to identify needs and feasibility for a legal evaluation study based on existing legal, health, or other data. Part of our conversation in our program tends to be, is there health data available for us to offer some sort of analysis compared to the legal data? Statement number two, "A competent legal Epi practitioner will be able to design a legal evaluation research strategy to study potential correlations using public health surveillance or legal mapping studies." So that connects us back to the other domain, and the idea here is to be able to take the findings of a legal mapping study and public health surveillance data and move forward with legal evaluation research strategy. Competency statement three, "Collect and analyze qualitative and quantitative study data using generally accepted research methodology." That one's pretty self-explanatory. And statement four focuses on interpreting results, drawing conclusions, and formulating key findings toward the improvement of public health. So it's making the connection between the legal Epi findings and public health outcomes or public health goals. So that is the legal Epi competency model, the draft version. And I'd like to pass the mic back to Ron. I'd love to use these next 15 minutes or so to get feedback from the folks on the line. Ron?
Great, thank you so much, Montreez. Great overview, a lot of content there. We keep on receiving additional examples through the chat box, and if you can continue to put in examples of how legal epidemiology is being used in your organization, it's great. Also, if you have thoughts about potential uses of legal epidemiology, also please continue typing those in the chat box. As you can imagine, as the legal epidemiology competencies continue to be refined, having these examples of uses and potential uses is so important to be sure that the legal epidemiology competencies are covering what really is needed. So now we're looking for, opening everything up for some questions, and also we have some specific questions for you as well. But Kathleen, I know you've received at least one question through the chat box. And as a reminder, you can enter questions in the chat slash question, or questions slash chat box, or you can raise your hand. And as you raise your hand, Janelle will then be able to unmute you. And Kathleen, if you could read the question we've received thus far, that would be great.
Sure. So the question, and I think Tara and Andy, you both had these sorts of visuals in your slides, so maybe one of you could share. What tool or software do you use to generate that dartboard visual, the concentric circles with color coding of states and their statutes or other characteristics?
This is Tara. So that's a, the polar graph, I think, is what you're talking about with the, looks like a donut with a bunch of colors. That was actually created by one of our health communicators here at CDC. We didn't use the program. I think she, I think she came up with the software to do that. I'm afraid I don't have a better example. I think there was a similar polar graph in Andy's presentation, and I'm not sure where that came from.
Yeah, I actually use Excel.
Wow.
And, yeah.
Pretty straightforward, huh?
I mean, well, I mean, there's no way I could sit here and like tell you all the steps I did to do it. But yeah, it was basically done through Excel.
Great.
Great.
Yes, Kathleen, somebody typed in a comment or question?
Somebody had a question about timing. So how can the turnaround time for conducting a legal Epi study vary? And what implications does this have for how findings are used? Any thoughts on that?
Good question.
Yeah, this is Tara. I'm nodding here. So there are many types and many complexities within those types of, particularly mapping studies, what I would think of as sort of the first step sometimes. And when I say first step, you know, if you are planning a legal evaluation and some of that requires doing a full mapping study, yes, absolutely, the time is a huge factor. For us in the federal government, we have to go through an OMB process, which is a paperwork production act requirement that requires us to get approvals before we even start evaluation. So time is a huge, a huge factor. In terms of mapping, though, I will sort of suggest something, which I feel like in the Public Health Program, we've started to understand a little bit better. But folks in the field, particularly at Temple University at the Policy Surveillance Program, have really been working on producing smaller, kind of more targeted, policy surveillance data sets. So if, instead of doing a full mapping study on seven domains of a particular topic, start with one, do a few, answer a few questions about the law and policy, and start to track it over time. We find that tracking of law and policy, the surveillance of law and policy, is actually not a high-burden task in terms of time, and it's ongoing. So it gives you real-time data. So if there is a burden in terms of mapping studies, it's on the initial assessment side typically. And the more questions you ask, and the more complex those questions, of course, sometimes it can be really difficult. There is definitely a place for those kinds of studies. It's just typically when you think about planning policy surveillance into your long-term plans for this research, it sometimes helps to narrow the question to a point where you're actually able to do this a little bit more efficiently. I hope that answers the question.
Great. And we have a variety, we have some hands raised, we have some questions in our chat box. But before we go to that, I just want to point out again the questions here on the screen. We really would love to hear your thoughts about, you know, did our colleagues get this right? Are these competencies, you know, do they adequately lay out the knowledge, skills, and abilities? Do the behavioral statements reflect what legal epidemiologists demonstrate, et cetera? So please, you know, start typing in your feedback about the legal epidemiology competency model, what's contained in it, and also, again, be raising your hands about that. So let me turn to Janelle. You said there were a couple of hands raised.
Yes, Bobby Jones, it looks like you have your hand raised. I'm going to unmute you. It looks like you've also muted yourself, so please feel free to unmute and speak if you'd like. All right, I think we have another as well. Like David Presley, you as well. I can feel free to unmute yourself and share.
Hi, yeah, this is David. I just wanted to confirm what Tara said. She invoked Temple's name, so I felt compelled to just say yes, it totally depends. And we would do the smaller, like she said, targeted, more focused data sets. I would say some data sets that, you know, maybe you focus on 15 to 20 different individual legal variables that might take two to three months to actually collect that legal data and validate it and do quality control and ensure that, you know, you have questions and study designs within that that actually will produce something, you know, worthwhile, worth studying. So, yeah, I just wanted to add that in.
Thanks, David.
Any other, okay, Kathleen?
And just as people are typing in their feedback, I'm going to read a couple more comments. So one comment here says, "I've heard pieces or seen pieces of this document over time, this competency model, but I hadn't yet seen it in its totality. I think this will be really valuable, and it should not just be limited to lawyers." And then we also have a question as well about, "How do you obtain health data to assess legal epidemiology principles? And do you see data scientists helping collect dynamic data to assess legal epidemiology?"
So at CDC, this is Tara, that is a little bit easier in some ways because we have so many, I guess, cross-jurisdictional data sets. Four states that are interested in doing policy surveillance and maybe, you know, I don't want to say standardizing questions, but certainly considering using sort of questions that other folks have asked of their own laws and policies, you know, what kind of authorities they have, how those authorities are being implemented. There are national conversations happening around those kinds of questions, and there is a value to it because if you're examining your laws and policies using the same questions and the same sort of yardstick that other people are, you'll end up with comparable data and maybe be able to compare your trends to other jurisdictions like yours with similar populations or similar kinds of health issues and make truly a more comparable data set. So that is, it's an ongoing question, and I think the ways that folks are approaching that is simply doing a more sort of intentional collaboration. And if you have any needs or sort of want to be put in touch with folks with similar issues, please feel free to reach out, you know, our partners in the field, that all the organizations we've mentioned so far also are sort of in the process of collecting and tracking and understanding what needs and what projects really states have going on. So happy to, happy to help facilitate all of that. I wasn't sure about the second part of the question. Would you mind answering or asking that again?
Sure. So it said, "Do you see data scientists helping collect dynamic data to assess legal epidemiology?"
Yeah, so one of the slides that I had in the beginning showed sort of a Venn diagram model with some branches off of it, and that came from an article about transdisciplinary public health law. And I really encourage folks to, you know, check out that article. It was really one of the foundational articles in the field, I think. And it talks about the needs of many different kinds of professionals with many different kinds of skills and this type of work. The competency model that we tried to sort of put together, contemplates that, and data scientists are absolutely a part of it. We use them here at CDC, even in organizations where that's not, where a data scientist isn't readily available. There are, you know, ways to sort of leverage opportunities with existing, we've heard of academic health departments working with, you know, health centers and, of course, the academics to kind of leverage these opportunities to do these evaluations and make the work a little bit more robust. So I hope that helps.
Okay, and we have one hand raised, I think, Janelle?
We do.
And I think this will be our last comment, question for, right now. But what we're going to do is, we are going to leave the webinar software open for about another five minutes after we end so that people can continue to type in their feedback. And also, we'll talk in a moment about other ways to provide feedback.
Yeah, thanks. David, please feel free to unmute and share your comment, question.
Just one brief addition to what Tara said about data scientists, the ones that I would work with at Temple often were, they served as a really good validator for what kinds of actual conclusions and causal influences that you could draw during the design of a study. So they would sort of rein in the ambitions of attorneys who might want to research really intricate points of law, and also rein in the ambitions of professors who may not understand data science quite as well and show them what, you know, would actually be a good and valid study design in the first place. That's all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you so much. So what we're going to do at this point is, well, first off, I want to thank Tara, Andy, and Montreez for wonderful presentations, a great discussion, and of course, thanking all of you who participated today because your feedback is just invaluable. There are a variety of ways that you can continue to provide your feedback. One is staying on the line and continuing to type in your comments. We've received some additional questions, some comments. Some of the questions, I think we can potentially get somebody to respond directly to an individual if there's a question that comes up. Secondly, there is a blog post. Kathleen put that in here on the slide. She also put it in the question slash chat box with a live link to the blog. In addition, we'll be sending out to everybody the archived webinar from today, and with that, we will include the link to the blog. So you can go into the blog post, and you can put in your additional comments, questions there as well. And lastly, you can share your feedback directly with Janelle Nichols. You just send her an email, and again, we will compile it. So lots of different ways that you can continue to dialogue on this. And I know from today's discussion, the feedback, and the involvement of all of you, there's lots of good thinking going on out there. So Janelle, if you could put it back to the questions again, we're going to leave this up for, again, another five minutes or so if you want to continue to provide feedback on that. And the last thing I again want to do is to thank our panelists one more time, Tara, Andy, and Montreez. And I want to thank all of you for your great participation today. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you so much, Ron.
You.